You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Welcome. City of Lamarck, City Council amended special meeting February the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Notice hereby given that City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a special meeting on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, beginning at six P. M. The council chambers at eleven oh nine B by Euro Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Government Code, a quorum of the Lamarck City Council and the mayor intend to be and will be physically present at eleven oh nine B by Euro Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. Item one, the meeting has been called order. Item two, roll call. Okay, would you give us a roll call, please?
Also, member district A.
President.
Council member district B.
President.
Council member district C.
President.
Council member district D.
President.
Can I get your address, please?
Forty-one oh one Main Street, Lamarck, seven seven five six eight.
Thank you, and Mayor.
Present. We'll have our invocation and pledge. I will do the invocation and Mayor Pro Tim, would you do the pledge?
Sure.
Let's pray eternal God, our Father, we acknowledge you as the author and finisher of our faith. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, and all of the benefits of salvation. We thank you, Lord, for this great, great town that we call home. For each and every member, Lord, we thank you for those appointed officials. We thank you for those staff members and even, Lord, us as elected officials. We ask that you would guide us in your wisdom tonight, that we would do everything in our capacity to provide a better life for those citizens in this great city, to provide a better experience for those staff members of this city. To the glory of your name, we bind any and all opposition to the goodness, the grace that is in you. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Item. For citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council on a specific agenda item, limited to three minutes. You should give the mayor your name and the item you wish to speak about. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you are visiting with us via phone, you may press star six to mute and unmute yourself to speak. If you are visiting with us via Zoom, there is, there should be a microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen. You may press the microphone so that you may mute and unmute yourself so that you might speak. If you are attending in person, you may approach the podium to my left or your right and give me your name and your address, and I will call on you to speak. Kyle, are there any persons online wishing to speak tonight? No. Are there any persons in this room wishing to speak tonight? Oh, just don't all come up at once. Nobody going once? Going twice? You can.
There will be a public.
Yeah, there will be a public hearing. Yes, 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 thank you, thank you for that, Gus. Hearing none, we'll move to item five. Look at that, Ms. Laura. I said, hearing that will move to item five as a public hearing. Five A, conduct public hearing to hear input regarding adopting ordinance number letter O dash two zero two two dash zero 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 two, calling a bond election to be held within the city of Lamarck, making provisions for the conduct and the giving of notice of the election and the containing and containing other provisions relating thereto. We will close this amended special meeting at?
Six oh six.
At six oh six, and we will open our public hearing at?
Six oh seven.
Six oh seven. Are there any persons via Zoom or in our audience tonight that wish to speak about ordinance number letter O dash two zero two two dash zero 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 two, a bond election being held within the city of Lamarck? You may approach, Ms. Laura. Give your name, your address, the, the, the year you graduated, your favorite dog.
Laura Devine, fourteen oh six, Mary Lane. And first of all, I want to thank y'all for even having this
Yes, ma'am.
on the agenda, and I know there's a lot of work that goes behind that since working at Calm. I mean, we had a unsuccessful bond, but less than twenty votes, so I know it takes a lot. Um, we had a successful one, and I know that they spent some money with the agency and worked really hard in getting the word out about the bond. So what, what I want to convey is that we desperately still need that police station. There's no doubt about that. But we also don't need like a White House, and we don't need to go from one bad situation, from one building to another maybe building that needs updating. What I would like to share is let's do some work with this bond to get the people in this, in this city behind it, and let's go like a mid, middle of the road to where people would buy in. Uh, when you talk about fourteen million dollars, that's a lot of money. And, I mean, sure, I would want a half a million dollar house, but is that gonna happen? No, maybe a fourteen million dollar police station isn't the way to go. Maybe it's, let's, let's do some work bonded. Is there some options we can do that get that number down to maybe eight million? I don't know. I know it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
So that's just my concern. I don't want it to fall back to where they're just stuck where they're at.
Yeah.
Because that's not doable. That's unhealthy.
Yeah.
And as a city, we've got to get together. There's great things happening in this city, and we all just need to come together and come up with a plan.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll do what I can to, you know, knock on doors and put door hangers or whatever I need to do to get this bond passed.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I want you to know that my, 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 my snicker was, was because of that number, and, and, and it'll become clear as the night goes on why, why, why I laughed, because I have been working diligently with Alec on, on some things. And so, so you, you put a smile on my face.
Getty.
Alec, Alec with, with the, the architect, Alec. Alec Long, is it Long, how you, how do you say it? Lung.
Because I mean, eight millions.
He's an architect.
Too, but I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm sure he can work magic.
I'm, I'm sure he can.
Okay.
We, we've been working on it already. That's why we're laughing, because it's funny that you should, you should even mention that number. It's just really freaky.
And I don't know.
I don't know if you have telepathy or.
Asking for citizens' input, but
Yes, ma'am.
maybe asking some of the citizens in this, you know, city to help out. And, I mean, I'm sure I could have resources from College in the mainland that might help that they know what they did wrong and the one that didn't pass, and they know what went right with the one that did pass. And now look at College in the mainland.
Right.
It's an awesome place.
Right, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And that's what I want from my city.
That's where we hit it. That's where we hit it. Yes, ma'am, that's where we hit it. Thank you. Well, since, since Ms. Laura did all the work, we can go home, right? Any other persons wishing to speak in this public hearing? Very good, very good. Let's move now to items, uh, we gotta close the public hearing. I, I knew you were, I felt you. Uh, let's close this public hearing at?
Six eleven.
And open the amended special meeting at?
Six twelve.
Six twelve. We are now on new business, item six A, discussion possible action regarding, regarding adopting ordinance number letter O dash two zero two two dash zero 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 two, calling a bond election to be held within the city of Lamarck, making precision, provisions for the conduct and giving notice of the election containing and containing other provisions relating thereto. Do we, Gus, do we need to entertain this now? Or do we need to visit with you and Alec in our executive session before we entertain this?
Um, the executive session is for the council to receive information regarding the bond and potential promotion of it, not the negotiations with Alec regarding.
Not, not, not dollar figures and things like that?
No.
Okay, Alec? You ready? You may approach. Alec Lung from, from our architectural firm that has worked on our assessment and has began working on the programming. So you're not, not a stranger to us, and so we'll give you the floor for your presentation.
Excuse me. So we, we, we have a presentation, although there are certain parts of that presentation that uh, may pertain to a real estate transaction, which is why we were permitted to share that in a public forum.
Yeah, we, we could do that, yeah.
So the, the presentation contains a real estate transaction.
Yes, that's correct.
So should we?
As, as, wait, sorry. It, if. Oh, so we are, you are talking about potentially buying real estate?
There, there is optionality.
Okay, yeah, that, that could be adjourned to an executive session, yes.
I guess he's asking, he.
To answer your question, yes, we could adjourn that to an executive session if that is what the council.
So do you, it, it, will your presentation be filled with real estate information?
To be comprehensive, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's, uh, let's do this then. We'll just, we'll just pull you and put you at the bottom.
Sure.
After executive session.
Okay.
Right?
That works.
That works.
Okay.
We can do that.
All right. Hold on, Ms. Laura, we getting it. We getting it. We're gonna put it down at the bottom. Let's move to item six B, discussion relating to managerial audit. Gus?
Yes, so um, a, a couple of months ago, Chase Carey, then interim city manager Chase Carey, asked my, asked myself to look at and perform an audit on the, not only the events of July first, two thousand and twenty-one, when multiple members of, well, when the top six city employees all left within a two-week time period. He, I was asked to look at that and then also provide some analysis, some analysis regarding best practices and things that were going on up to that point. I did that. The purpose of this is to summarize for council in short detail. Pass those out. The, my findings. What I have is the exhibits number in the hundreds of pages. Get them out, I do not have finders, but, um, of course, I have produced those electronically to the council. So to begin with, um, as we, I, I spoke to Robin Eldridge, Patty Reese, Kyle Hunter, Susie Koo, Chase Carey, and Mayor Keith Bell. One, dur- during the course of the investigation, we uncovered five issues that required some additional analysis. Those were succession planning, records management, city issued vehicles for elected officials, the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget, and staffing within the city manager's office. So as I said, the top six employees within the city of Lamarck all left within a two-week period. Those individuals, Charles Tink Jackson, the city manager, David Jordan, the assistant city manager, Charlene Warren, the assistant city manager, Todd Wideman, the fire chief, Charles, well, Dara Purnell, the city attorney, and then Charles Kirk Jackson was the police chief, and while he had announced his retirement um, prior to July first, it was moved up so that he could leave, or that he did leave shortly after July first. Move, moving, moving on, moving further into the report, um, beginning with the succession planning, the city of Lamarck, the city manager for Lamarck on October first, two thousand and nineteen, put out a citywide memo to the department heads in, instructing them to come up with a succession plan for their offices. The purpose of this is to provide continuity, or would be to provide continuity government um, and to allow the city to continue to operate should somebody be out sick or for whatever reason be unavailable. As part of that succession plan, these department heads were encouraged to remind their employees that hard work and good work would be rewarded by the city. Um, the, multiple departments have, had, have and had and have succession plans. We were unable to locate a succession plan for the city manager's office, but as I'll get into that, the, whether there was one or not was not really the issue of this review. It appears that there was a that if there was to have been a succession plan, it was likely undermined by the city manager's office. When check, when the staff, when the staff members left, some of them took their phones with them. The issue with that is that there appears to have been city business conducted on the phones. The city has and continues to undertake all steps required to secure city data, but a certain member, David Jordan, left his phone with the city and a review, a review of that phone, and, and again, the purpose, while Mr. Jackson was employed for almost two years, the, the, the review really folk, and, and in that time, generated approximately forty thousand texts that were produced to my office. In that time, however, in that time, and, and the purpose of this review was focused on the months leading up to the departure. And of course, um, as with any document-intensive production like this, it's run through professional software that OCRs it and allows it to become searchable. So, um, and, and that's, is generally how these massive document productions are handled these days, and that's what we did in our review of it. Moving forward, those texts between, with Mr. Jordan, between Mr. Jacks, between Mr. Jackson as then Chief Jackson and Charlene Warren, and sometimes Todd Wideman indicate there. And these are not all of them, but these are just descriptions. Uh, there are texts referring to Maribel as a sociopath. There are texts referring to Chris Lane as being with Mayor Bell. There are texts describing then Joe Campion as not being good for K L N B C. Text describing Maribel as up to no good. There were, there was a meeting shortly before July first that was going to be held between city, upper, upper staff that was moved from City Hall because Mayor Bell was going to be at City Hall, and we presume it was done to avoid him. Um, there are texts describing, and I apologize, these are their words, not mine, as unprofessional and an ass. There are texts describing, and again, their words, not mine, councilman. Then, oh, I believe council member elect Michael Carlson as Bell's little boy. Text describing mid, then unelected council member Yancey as a vote to fire Charles Tink, Tink Jackson. And there were texts alluding to alleged but unidentified criminal actions of council. At this point, I would like to make a point that, and I would like to iterate this in very strong terms. There has been no evidence of throughout any of this three, four to five-month-long process of any criminal action. So we, we don't, either in the text of the employees or anything else we have come across. So I, I could not even, through, through this review, I could not even tell council what it was they were, they, they thought was going on. So I, I point that out for the council's information. So moving on, um, these messages indicate a belief between the depart, between certain department heads that there would be, that department heads would, their replacements would be, including the police chief, would be handpicked by Mayor Bell. The Chase Carey confirmed this belief and that they, and that there was a belief that was perpetuated that the, the mayor would, the mayor and with the assistance of council would, uh, appoint a number of their friends or whoever, they would essentially handpick their, the department heads for the city. I point out that is a, that is and would be a violation of the charter agreement. The Lamarck Charter Agreement is clear. The mayor and council elect the city manager, but they are not allowed to request, suggest, et cetera, that require that the city manager hire anyone or fire anyone. Um, and, and that actually, if that were to occur, that, that would likely subject the member to removal from the council. So I point all that out to say that it's unclear from, while that belief was there, it's unclear to me why that belief was given such credence, but it appears to have been. The so, gi- given this clear, this, this mistrust was, as I said, or appears to be based on a misreading of the charter. Regardless of that, um, as, and as I will do throughout this, we, I was directed by Chase to not only identify issues that led to, but begin the process of proposing a solution. Given that for this issue, we would, we would suggest that discussions between city staff based on personal attacks of city council members, while we understand things happen, they should not be encouraged by city management and should actually, actually be discouraged. Going forward, we, uh, we would suggest that, um, the department heads, um, do that. Moving on, the, there, there is an issue of records management with the city. Speaking with, uh, Kyle, Kyle Hunter, the city's IT, then, then when IT director and Robin Eldridge, the then city clerk, the city of Lamarck's record management policy is from, is from nineteen ninety-five. We are in the process of updating that, but given that, that, that is an issue that is facing the city. It also appears, um, discussions with the city's IT director that city staff was directed to cease conducting city business through text message and utilize, uh, Microsoft Teams. The reason for that and is that this goes to a continuity of government issue. The city pays and for Microsoft, for Microsoft enterprise accounts that include Microsoft Teams for almost all their employees. Microsoft Teams is among other things, a, has a chat feature or similar to text message. It works on your computer, it works on your phone, there's an app through the phone. All of, what all of this allows you to do is, or allows for the city to do, is have access and a backup to people's records, people's records and what the city is doing, so that when we get an open records request, we don't have to ask Chief Aragon, for example, give us your text. Somebody requested your text was the mayor. We have the city, either Kiara's office, Kyle's office, and somebody else can, can pull the stuff from the team's account and to, so it improves not only efficiency, continuity of government, but also a means of checks and balances. It, that way you don't have the person whose records are being requested searching them. Does it happen every day in governments across this state? Yes. Is it the best practices? Probably not, or likely not. And so the city, so all that to say that while city staff was directed to do that, the policy was not followed and it was not enforced by management, and a review of their text messages indicates that they were likely not following. David Jordan, for example, was not following it himself. There was, and, and, and while I would say it is one thing to can, to text outside, to text a citizen for means of communication outreach, it's, most people text these days, they don't do phone calls. They don't, we're not gonna write a letter, that'll take a week to get to them. But it's another thing entirely to text your subordinate when both of you have a team's account. So that, that, and, and it's the issue of the internal city data that would that this was designed to capture. So and one, once you begin allowing employees to archive their own communications, it creates the temptation to conceal something. Whether it's done or not, it is a temptation, and that is, what we're trying to do is remove that. This city, the, the city council has approved a budget with not only Microsoft Teams in it, but, um, the budget was approved and it's actually begun distributing phones with the Ring Central app on it. This is a central, this is a voice over IP system, among other things that the city contracts for is a central repository of all those messages, so that if I were to text Kyle to his Ring Central number, that text, whatever it is, would be archived at Ring Central, so that if Kyle and I get, if our phones get hit by buses, somebody can go back and see what, what is on it. And Kyle and I will try to not get run over by the same bus. And, and again, that is something that staff, that as part of this council, as part of the budget, that is something that staff has presented to council and council has, has provided the funds for city staff to do. Here's an issue of city vehicles for elected officials. It appears a review of Mr. Jackson's text messages indicates that there was a city vehicle delivered for then mayor, for former Mayor Hawking. I would just, we pulled hit, we pulled the fuel receipts for that. Comes out to approximately three hundred and fifty gallons of fuel used in two thousand and twenty and which cost in excess of five hundred dollars. While that is not a lot, while we concede that is not a lot of money, we do point out that the Lamarck Charter Agreement provides that members of council only be reimbursed for their expenses, and we were unable to find a poli, we were in discussions with Robin Eldridge and Kiara Lance. We were unable to find a policy that basically provided for council members to be provided a car and gas, uh, because the, as I said, these are fuel receipts for two thousand and twenty. They, they run January through December. Going, um, I spoke with, uh, Mayor Keith Bell, who was in two thousand and twenty, a council member, and it sounds like these issues were brought to city management, but nothing appears to have been done about it. While we would say what's done is done, I would say that going forward, uh, if elected officials are gonna receive not necessarily comp, well, compensation for their service that, or something that may look like compensation, but is actually reimbursement, that should That should really be brought to council to, to sign off on it. Because what, what we don't, what you don't want to see is one council member getting something, the other council member's not. And maybe the other council members don't know about it, or maybe they do. But the point is, is that you have a policy and a record of it being done of the council seeing it. So that's how we would propose to handle that. As, as far as the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget process, I think we all remember that, the budget hearings very well. They were, they were pretty long. And speaking with Susie Koo, the city's finance director, it, the budget process would normally have begun earlier in the calendar year. There was some delay because there was new, there was new accounting software. But Susie didn't believe that that led to the complete, to the total delay of the pro, of the process. And for example, norm management, she did not believe had met with the department heads as of June twenty twenty-one. And I, I would point out to, that the budget process begins for council's purposes late July, August. So now that, that, that doesn't leave much time to put a budget together. Now, whether that is enough time or not, it doesn't sound like it was. The budget process did appear rushed. I think multiple council members had questions about it. But another issue is that is the Lamarck Police Association. And, and let me be clear here, nobody is casting stones at them. The Lamarck, the Police CBA requires that they give at least three months notice of their intention to negotiate on economic terms before their, and that's three months notice before the expiration of the CBA. The CBA expires September thirtieth. The city's negotiating team of, which was appointed by Chase Carey, did not, did not, well, there was not a negotiating team until September, late August, early September. That negotiating team was appointed by Chase Carey. But one of the first things we learned is that unbeknownst to us and unbeknownst to the city finance department, this Lamarck Police Association actually went above and beyond the call and transmitted notice in November of twenty twenty to the city manager's office that they intended to negotiate on economic terms. The, which, given the issues with COVID that everybody was facing, was very considerate of them. They did not have to do that, and that gave the city plenty of time to negotiate with them on economic terms. And just so we're clear, you have, you have non-economic terms, which are going to be generally working conditions, equipment, that sort of thing. Economic terms are going to be, is going to be pay. So the ci, so Susie's office, as she did for every employee negotiated, or negotiated, calculated a two percent cost of living increase into the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. That, that was given to the police, to the police officers as well. But the issue is that through no fault of their own, they, they, they wish to receive a, a greater raise than that, which again, they are perfectly entitled to, to ask for, and nobody is faulting them for. And they actually told the city in November, so that the city, if negotiations had begun, could give that information to Susie, so that the budget could be prepared accordingly. That was not done, so that the negotiating team was put in a position of essentially having a, a budget that was almost ready to go and then have to negotiate economic terms, which could have forced it, but for the understanding and, but for the understanding and re, and niceness of the police union did not. The police union understood the circumstances of the city and worked with us to address those issues. And I know I said it then, and I will say it now, I really appreciate that. On, some of the union members are here, I really appreciate that. That was not something that the union had to do. So, and so going forward, the issue is from the city's perspective. When a public sa, when a public safety union tells us they want to negotiate economic terms, that really needs to be communicated to the finance director so that she can build a budget that incorporates their pay. Because without that, we're, everybody is put in a bad, bad situation. And, and it's just something that could have been avoided. So as I said, going forward, we would propose that when anything like that comes across, that it be immediately forwarded to the city's finance director. And then finally, there's, there was an issue with the city manager's office staffing that came up. It appears reviewing the adopted twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget, which is, which, we'll take a step back here. It is while coun, while the city manager runs the city, it is council that, and, and the city manager presents a budget to the city council with expenditure, how much, not specific, general expenditure. So maybe not necessarily we're going to pay, we're going to fix this pothole, but we're going to allocate a hundred thousand dollars to fixing potholes, that sort of thing. And it is the council that adopts slash approves the budget. And it is that budget that sets forth the appropriations and expenditures of the city for the following fiscal year. That's where the issue of the city, the staffing for the city manager office comes in. The twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one bu, adopted budget contained three members in the city manager's office. Those are the city manager, assistant to the city manager slash emergency management coordinator and a receptionist. The proposed budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two shows that for fiscal year twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one, there were in fact, there was in fact, one city manager, two assistant city managers and a receptionist. So instead of an office of three, you have an office of four. I also point out that that, that reman, or that 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 hiring of an additional assistant city manager is not just, we are not just relying on the budget, but there was in fact, a December twenty twenty memorandum that was circulated indicating that David Jordan was being hired as an assistant city manager at, with a salary of eighty-five thousand dollars and, and, and a, and a company benefits with that. So the issue, so in discussions with Susie, with Susie Koo, the, the, there does not appear to have been a budget amendment that was presented to council. Susie's impression was that the decision was made to fund Mr. Jordan's position out of the fund balance. It's really not a good idea to fund ongoing expenses out of your fund balance. Your fund balance is generally going to be essentially like a savings account. It's for one time, cap unexpected, capital, capital cost, those sorts of things. So from a best practices, that's not the best idea. But the other issue is that, as, as I said, it is the city council that adopts the budget and the appropriations. It appears that there was no appropriation of, for Mr. Jordan's salary, which lends one to believe that that was likely a violation of the charter. As it is council who has the sole authority to approve trend, transactions in excess of forty-nine thousand, forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. Regardless, while that is council, the purchasing levels or purchasing threshold, this really isn't a purchasing issue, it's an appropriations issue. Money was not appropriated for this position, yet the position was filled, which was likely, which, as I said, would, could likely be seen, could likely be a violation of the law charter. So to sum it all up, there was a mistrust by employees in the city manager's office. This of the city council, this mistrust likely led or contributed to the exodus of certain employees on or shortly after July first, twenty twenty-one. As a, as I said, throughout this process, we have been working with city staff as we identify issues. We want to fix them going forward. We don't want to say this is bad, bad things happen and then not propose a fix, because we didn't feel that that would be helpful to the staff who cooperated with us or the council or the citizens as a whole. So that, that was what we found. And if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them to the best of my knowledge.
Let's, uh, let's open this up to council. Who wants to go first? If anybody.
I'll pick up, I'll pick up at your last section there with regard to the assistant city manager.
Yes.
And I recall that was the first topic. I recall that was on the first agenda of a meeting that I participated in. And because there was feedback from both Casey and, and Keith, that there was a, that was, that was already discussed. And I, and if you look at the record, that was apparently, we, we didn't have a twenty twenty, we didn't have a twenty-one, twenty-two budget ready. That would have been the twenty twenty-one budget.
Yes, it was the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget.
And there was a budget, there was a budget, what's the term that you use, the budget amendment that, that occurred with that?
No, so the, the council, and, and I pulled these budgets from the city's website.
Okay.
There was the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget that allocated, that appropriated three positions to the city manager's office. Then there was the memo indicating that there was an additional eighty-five thousand dollar sal, salary person who was hired in discussions with Ms. Koo and, with Ms. Koo. It, the decision was made that it would be funded out of the fund balance, which would imply that it was not budgeted, that, that there was not a specific appropriation or budget amendment. And then the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two proposed budget indicates that, and, and again, I, I pulled this from the city's website, indicates that in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, there were actually four city, city manager employees. That, that proposed budget would have been prepared by Chase Carey. And Chase Carey was proposing to go back to three employees in the city manager's office. One city manager, one assistant to the city manager and one receptionist.
Okay, well, once again, I'm, I think I'm, there's a, I have a different understanding, I'm going to go look at my records and I'll pass on that information. Having said that, however, I need some clarity. And, and both perhaps from the mayor and Casey, you guys with a longer seniority here. When, when council allocates X amount of dollars to a department such as the city manager office, is it the prerogative of the city manager to then decide how he's going to allocate that and, and individuals?
I, I would say no, and I would also say that the budget that was adopted by the council contained an allocation of those. Or yes, an allocation of those, of those individuals. That does not appear to have been followed by the city management.
And the answer to that is no. As, as we, as we adopt a budget document, that document is, is our expression to our community exactly what we believe our services should be and exactly those positions that, that we feel would, would best serve our city. It is against our charter to create a position. The only entity that can create any position is this city council.
Is the council.
Yes, sir.
So I'll, I'll follow through on my concerns. Now, the record management issue and the, the use of the Microsoft Teams
Yes.
software, my question there Gus is, in text messages to you, now I've never really utilized a lot of text messages, but in the event that I do to you, do they remain confidential attorney-client communications if I so designate them?
Any conversation with me is going to be privileged. That, my firm has a Green Central. And so text messages to me are, are, would be covered by that. And we have an enterprise security system.
So I wanted to.
So sending a, a message like that would not wait for privilege.
Okay, very good. And the the issue of I guess all these texts with the, all these comments, and, and this is just an observation. It speaks to a, and Mayor and my fellow counselors, I think it speaks to a fellow, it speaks to a culture within, within any city management, right? Is, is, what's that city manager going to encourage? And certainly, and, and Keith, you're not around for a while too. We've talked about the fact that professional staff does not get involved in the politics of a community.
Yeah.
Because it, it interferes with their effectiveness.
Yep.
And, and I don't know what, other than having saying it here publicly from this forum, do we have anything that, that in writing in terms of a policy or guidance to the city manager with regard to that particular fact?
Sure. What, what I would say is that all of the, the, all of the, we have a, not only do we have a employee handbook that speaks to how employees will act in public. The, if you were to say that, well, we also have a succession plan that came out before these texts that speaks to staff should senior staff, people's boss, people's superiors should be encouraging them that hard work will be rewarded by the city. These texts make it seem that in fact, hard work will not be rewarded by the city. Council's going to appoint department heads who they want. And that is the issue with them.
All right.
Among others.
Among other.
But, but from a, from a city policy perspective, that's.
And my last comment is with regard to the unfortunate, the unfortunate, I would say permission given to, to our former mayor to use this vehicle. I don't blame, I don't blame the mayor. I, I point the finger to the previous administration, right? That, that enabled that.
Right, yeah. And, and, and thank you for saying that. Again, the, the, the point of that was not to point the finger at, at the mayor. It, it was some, it was to point out that if we're going to have things like this happen, stat, it, it needs to be brought to the council. And so.
And, and I think.
And that, that would be our proposal going forward.
Or, and, and I think that also speaks to this one area that I still have some difficulty understanding that we receive as volunteers, as volunteers, this fifty dollars a month. And that indicated I'm giving mine away to different charities. That's number one. Number two, there is a separate budget item for each office. And for example, that, and I'm not too clear as to the amount, I'm going to say that, I still don't understand that. I've asked for some clarity there. But having said that, I do know that when Robin was here and we had some discussions on that, that, that amount exists, we've got some discretion. that, that amount exists, we've got some discretion. But it primarily, and, and Mr. Osteen's here, he's been a counsel, but it exists to, to better us in terms of, of our service to this community. So it's there to encourage us, just like our police officers, our firemen, to take additional classes that are offered, or attend different seminars and participate in, in, in this opportunity, these opportunities to better ourselves, to become a stronger, uh, councilperson, a learned councilperson, let's put it that way. And, um, and then at the same time, as we, as, as in my case, I've identified certain items that are unique to myself. I am still old school. I love to read and printouts. And I, and as I mentioned to Kira, uh, one of the things that could, I'm requesting is just pay for my ink for my laser printer. I don't need another printer, and I said that to Kyle too, right? And that's a way to, to minimize, because I'm printing out, unfortunately, I'm killing a lot of trees. But, uh, but I have to, that's, I'm not good at, at what they're doing on the computer like that. I have to see it and write on it. And so, um, and that's something I think in terms of orientation for those that are coming on council is to spend a little bit more time understanding and reviewing that area. That's all. Thank you.
Let, let me, let me clarify, uh, to help Mayor Protem. Each council district and the mayor receives $5,000 a year. We don't receive it. It's put away for us to do things for our district. Uh, there's a separate line item in the city council's budget that provides for training and travel. Uh, we go to TML conferences. Uh, I have to go to hurricane conferences or conferences, uh, the National League of Cities or the National Association of Mayors or things like that. Uh, but the $5,000 that we have allocated to us is for special projects in our district. Say, uh, the curbs in, in District C, uh, the fire lanes are need painting. Well, Michael can then allocate that very quickly to try to help the district. Say, uh, there's a home buying class that Ms. Yancy, uh, wants to provide for the citizens of District A or even the citizens of Lamarck. Uh, those, those monies are for us to directly impact our district uh, in, in, in a way that, you know, we wouldn't be able to normally in our budget because our budget is so tight. And so I wanted to clarify what those, those things are. Any other questions for Gus? Well, let me get into it then. Uh, Gus, part of the, and, and I'm not gonna be long, I just wanna, I wanna tie some things together for us because there's a lot of things that are happening out in the streets. A lot of folks saying a whole lot of things, and so let's, let's try to put these things together because I can promise you they go together. Gus, uh, did you receive any text messages uh, that suggested that the former city manager was worried about Mayor Bell, Councilmember Carlson, and Councilmember Yancy terminating his employment?
Yes, the review of Mr. Jordan's phone indicated that then unelected council members Car- Carlson and Yancy would be votes.
Would join me.
Would be votes to fire Mr. Jackson.
Okay. Also, these text messages, uh, aside from lower level department heads calling me a sociopath. Let, let me read them, let me tell you what they said. I, I talk a whole lot louder than Gus. Uh, these are the ones that he put in this report. Let me just say what they're saying about us so that I can tie this together like a bow. There's a text message, uh, not from Mr. Jackson, uh, but from one of the other department heads that says Mayor Bell is a sociopath. It was actually a meme. Uh, does this describe anybody to a T? Text describing Chris Lane as being with me. Chris Lane is a friend of mine, a dear friend of mine, uh, and a former city council member with the utmost character. Uh, text, text describing Joe Compeon as a disaster on KLMBC. Text describing Mayor Bell as up to no good. What does that mean? I don't know. And when I would come to City Hall, City Hall, when I would come to City Hall, like I should come as a mayor. Texts that sought to move meetings of these staff members so that they can avoid me. Why would they want to avoid the mayor? I don't know. Text describing Councilmember Carlson as my little boy. I have not known Councilmember Carlson until he became, uh, a candidate for council and he visited with me and hey, what's going on in the city? What do I need to know? I'm running for office. Other than that, he was an employee and I waved at him like any other employee. Text describing then unelected Councilmember Yancy as a vote to fire Charles Tink Jackson. When, while she was running for office, uh, she always talked to me about what it was like working with Tink Jackson and how she looked forward to coming into the city to work with whoever was here. So I don't know where he got that from. Text alluding to the criminal actions of all of council. The reason I read those things for you is because I want you to pay attention to this. They're saying that we're criminal, he's saying that we're criminal, that, uh, we're up to no good and that we're unprofessional. Remember that. I just told you then that he was preoccupied with the idea that myself, Councilmember Carlson and Councilmember Yancy would fire him. If you go out into the social media circles right now, and you go out into the street right now, go out that door, you'll see recall signs. And what are the reasons that they are, that, that this one person, not they, this one person is threatening to recall me and Kim and Michael? He doesn't have a reason. He just throws up, what does he throw up? He throws up corruption. Where did that come from? Well, apparently it came from the city manager's office. Although there is no evidence of corruption, never has been any evidence of corruption, never will be any evidence of corruption. But somehow, there's a person in the community that's, that's screaming corruption without any knowledge or any evidence of corruption. Where did he get it from? This is where he got it from. Have you asked yourself why, out of all four of us, let me say this to you, and, and I don't want to hurt Casey's feelings, I love Casey to death. One of the biggest enemies of some people in our community is Casey McAuliffe because she's different and she thinks differently. They always, they have, listen, listen to what I'm saying to you because we, this is gonna become clear. They have always her enemies railed against Casey. Why is it that only Michael, Kimberly, and Mayor Bell are the ones that are being threatened? Naturally, Casey should be a part of that, right? But it's here, it's in the text. It's because the former city manager thought that my eye and those other two individuals would be a vote to terminate him. It's starting to come together, isn't it? There's somebody on the inside that's perpetuating all of these slanderous and libelous statements because they're scared that they're going to get fired. And now they're trying to destroy an entire city. The truth is coming out tonight. That's what's happening. That's why a person who's been on this council for 18 years, all of a sudden, who ran, who won with, I won with 90% of the vote. And there are more than, James Osteen is, is a capable candidate for mayor. David Pennington would be a capable candidate for mayor. Laura Devine would be a capable candidate for mayor. Joe Compeon would be a capable candidate for mayor, but nobody ran, Robert Mischich would have been a capable candidate for mayor. But nobody ran against me. If I was so corrupt, they would have all lined up to run against me. But it didn't happen. What we need to know tonight about this audit as it relates to the turmoil going on in our city is that there was in our city manager's office a contemplation, a fear about this council. And it was perpetuated through those directors and they all left because they were scared because they were told that they would be fired and that I would somehow handpick their successor. And Gus was being nice. The real rumor is I would fire all of the Caucasian directors and somehow hire all African-American directors. Let me tell you, uh, our roster now. David Merriman is the interim, uh, Fire Chief. David's back there. Wave at him, David. I don't think he's African-American. Uh, Deera Purnell recommended Mill Shirley. She was the outgoing city attorney. She recommended this comp, this, this law firm, and we kept them. Kiara Nance was part of Tink Jackson's succession plan. That's why she was appointed by council. Chief Randall Argon was brought here by Chase Carey. And Carey Pettijohn was a unanimous decision by this council. I think that I covered every director. Uh, wait a minute, let's, let's go further. Kathleen Van Steveren is not African-American. And she was promoted not by me, but by Chief Argon into the position of Developmental Services Director. So this idea, this fake phony idea of criminality and corruption is coming from a vindictive city manager's office who wants to destabilize and undermine our government, and he found a partner on the outside to do this. But again, there is no evidence of any of this. Let me go further and I won't be long. If there was evidence of corruption and criminality and Mr. Tink Jackson was our city manager, he knows how to handle that. Because if you look at his history in Pierceall, Texas, in Pierceall, Texas, he makes all sorts of filings and allegations against council members in Pierceall, Texas. He knows how to go to the DA. He knows how to go to the Ethics Commission. He knows how to go to the Police Chief. He knows how to go to the Texas Rangers. He knows how to go to these council members if he wanted to, but he didn't. You know why he didn't? Because there was nothing there. There is nothing there. And we have to move on from this idea that somehow, some way, we are corrupt and we are doing things illegally and all sorts of things like that. The reason why Tink Jackson, in my opinion, this is my opinion only, the reason why Tink Jackson was on the hot seat is because Tink Jackson had violated the charter. He violated the charter by allowing, and this has nothing to do with Bobby Hocking. Bobby Hocking, in my opinion, he didn't do anything other than what he was allowed to do. And let me back up. This council, nor the previous council, ever gave the mayor permission to ride in a, a city vehicle. We voted on a fleet of vehicles that we were told would be going to Public Works. There was a whole fleet of them that we voted on, and each, each of those vehicles would go to Public Works. Now, because Mayor Hocking had a vehicle and had a gas card, it was questioned. Tink Jackson, in my opinion, did nothing. Because there were city managers, assistant city managers hired outside the charter, those were violations of the charter, and because of that, my relationship with Tink Jackson went downhill to the point that we didn't even speak because I was afraid that if I got in a room with him by myself, there would be issues. And so I, I, I cut all communications except for communications on this council or with witnesses. Robin Eldridge will tell you if she was here. Call her. I don't mind you calling her. She will tell you that there are times when I asked her to walk with me to the city manager's office and listen to what I'm saying to the city manager. And so again, I'm tired of it. I don't have a truck. If I was corrupt, I would be riding in the same truck that the mayor rode in. I don't have a truck, uh, at all. And let me say this, this to you, uh, ask you this, Gus. Do you have all of the text messages from the former city manager's phone?
It, it would appear, um, that there were texts that were produced by other, um, city staff that were not in what was produced to me. I confirmed with Mr. Carey, who, and these were texts that, that he would, that all of the department heads were on. I confirmed with Mr. Carey that he did in fact send that text, um, to all of the department heads, and he was unsure why it would not have been produced.
So you don't have all of Mr. Jackson's texts?
Likely not.
Likely not. So that means when you don't have.
Potentially not.
Potentially not. So when you don't have all of a person's texts, does that suggest that perhaps they've deleted them?
I would be uncomfortable saying why, why he did not produce them.
Very good.
Why, 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 let me, let me rephrase. Why they would, why anyone would not produce them.
So when we.
Other than that they would not.
So, so we're not gonna beat a dead horse? I think, I think those of you in the community have enough information to now combat those allegations that are being made by, against our council. Those, those threats of, of, of all sorts of other things that are being made toward our council. Now we know, we know the truth. Somebody on the inside was saying all of these hurtful, ugly things, and apparently it was getting to the outside. I know how it got there, but I'm not gonna say right now because it has nothing to do with city business. So when you hear all these things about me being corrupt and, and Carlson being whatever Carlson is and Yancy being whatever she is, when you see all these things and you hear all these things, now you know where it came from. Now you know exactly where it came from. It was unprofessional. Uh, it was inappropriate, uh, and it's sad to say that when you have not done your job to the, to the, the satisfaction of, of a community. Because that's where all of this started, right? I went on listening tours. I had town hall meetings. I campaigned. And there were two things that everywhere I went, there are two things that, that the people told me. We want to be safe and get rid of the city manager. That's what I heard everywhere I went. So I want to wrap this up. I want to put a bow on it. I'm not going, like I said, I'm not finna belabor it all night. But again, the next time you hear that rhetoric, and the truth tonight is gonna make some people mad. You know that. The next time you hear that rhetoric, remember what we're dealing with. We're dealing with somebody on the outside that is taking marching orders from somebody who's not even here anymore. And we have to deal with this. All right, I'm done. Let's move on.
Hey, Mayor.
You want to say something?
Yeah, now that the shock is over, um, and by the, by the shock of some of the comment is like the one directed towards me and I take is pretty racist. Um, and I'm sure there's other comments out there that are pretty racist, which is unprofessional, which is not how we operate as a city. But I want to ask Gus, did in the 40,000 text messages you got, was there any text messages alluding to from other senior staff alluding to improper relationships that they were having or, or?
In the text, no.
Or unethical behavior that they were wanting to exhibit or have exhibited?
In, in the text, they did not appear to be there. They're, they're, yes. I will, I will leave it. I will leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. That's, now that shock is over, that's all I had.
Sure. I understand. Let's move, uh, to item seven, uh, new business. Seven, discussion, possible action regarding the city manager, manager position for the city of Lamarck. Well, we have, uh, gotten down to, uh, four finalists. Those four finalists were interviewed on, uh, Monday, was it Monday? Monday. Those four finalists were interviewed Monday by, uh, community members. And they were the department, uh, not department, excuse me, they were the, uh, chairpersons of our, uh, boards and commissions. There were four of them that participated, and they were interviewed by, I believe, all director level uh, uh, staff members with also the addition of, uh, Jennifer Faircloth Earl, who is the city manager's uh, administrative assistant, and that's important for, for her to interview, as well as, uh, one of our administrative assistants, Venetia Henderson, in Public Works because Rick Seiler was, uh, unavailable, uh, on Monday. Uh, and so we are at this point where we're at four finalists. Let's see if then uh, we can hear from members of our community, uh, from department heads. Uh, and then before we do anything, perhaps we can hear from our council. This is a transparent government, and this will be the first time that this council has had an opportunity to discuss, uh, the city manager's position, and we're going to do it in front of you. Do we have persons, I believe, David, are you scheduled to speak tonight? Will you, will you not? Well, come on up here David, I mean goodness, David.
Now we shy.
Now you shy.
First of all, I would like to thank the mayor and council for the opportunity to have citizens interview the city manager applicants. Mayor said, this is a, this is unprecedented. This is the first time it's ever happened in our city that I know of. And, uh, we really appreciate the opportunity to have some input into this selection. We interviewed four applicants as it said. And we graded them on a list of questions that were furnished by the selection firm. And, uh, I don't know about the other groups, but in, I was in charge of the chairperson's group. I allowed the people in my group to ask questions at the end that weren't on the, the selected questions. And each one had one or two questions that they ask each applicant. I wanna say that all the applicants were very qualified. I think the search firm did a good job in finding people who would fit in our city. We all, uh, we all interviewed, we all asked the questions and then we kinda compared notes. We rated them with, uh, an E for excellent, a G for good and an M for no good. It wasn't, it wasn't no good, it was not. Remember it had an N. But, uh, and then what we did is we put those all together and we just took all the E's and we counted up. How many E's we had for each one? And we came out with two candidates that we thought were the best fit for our city. One of the individuals that, uh, was with us was Mike Bach, he's chairman of the, uh, parks board. He could not be here tonight, but he did send an email. And if it's alright, I would like to read what he had to say.
Yes sir.
Mayor and city council, regrettably, I will be unable to attend the special council meeting Thursday, February seventeenth. I want to personally thank you all for allowing the city's board chairmans to be included in the interview process for Lamarck's new city manager. Throughout my years of serving on the parks board, this is the first time I can recall that any board member was asked to participate. In helping choose such a high profile city position. On Monday afternoon, I submitted my one and two candidate choices based on interviews with the four city manager finalists. There were some great candidates to choose from with the input from the board members and the city department heads. I'm sure you all will be able to pick the best new city manager for Lamarck. And I personally will look forward to great things with this person. The great things this person can bring to our great city, or respectfully, Mike Rockbuck. Again, I wanna thank council for the ability, for the opportunity to participate in this selection process. And I'm sure that the candidates we have suggested, that y'all have interviewed them again, I know. And I feel that y'all will make the best choice and the right fit for the city of Lamarck. Thank you.
Thanks dude.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak from our staffs? Don't all run up at one time. Oh, there's Ms. Patty. I knew we had one.
Yes, our staff was very excited about being part of the interview process. It was very hard, um, because we had four good candidates. But we came to the top three. Um, I, I, the, the day of it, uh, we were three split. Uh, we had eleven, uh, of us to participated, so it was very hard. But I went back and, and took a, um, a poll. Cause we didn't write it down that day of who voted first, second, third and fourth. So we did pick the top, uh, the top ones. So, um, the interview process went really well because each candidate had presented their, um, uh, their resume and, and all their, uh, good qualifications. So, um, it took us all morning to do, come up with these, uh, candidates. So, um, yeah, we got, we got a good, good count here, so.
Who, who was it?
Um, the top one was Lionel Lyons. Second was Cynthia Northrup and third was, um, Cesar Garcia. And last was, um, Sina Tedford.
Yes ma'am.
I mean, when we totaled it all up.
Yes ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do y'all have any questions council for either David or Ms. Patty?
Uh, no questions for me. I do wanna thank staff again though, for, that is, you know, it's, I hope it's seen as a good thing by, by staff. But I also recognize that it's a, a delicate thing to interview who will eventually be. You know, your prospective boss. Um, and I, I hope that the staff understands that we understand that. And so that, it was a really great service they did to the city. So thank you.
My, my sentiments exactly. Casey. Does any, any other council member have any questions or, uh, for, uh, uh, David or Ms. Patty?
If I could, um, I think, I didn't realize that she was gonna announce names and. So, uh, I think David, then if you want to share that as well too, your, your rankings.
Our top candidate was Mr. Garcia. And our second candidate would have been, uh, Ms. Northrup.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Alright ladies and gentlemen, first thoughts? We just-
We're just discussing.
Yeah, we just discussing.
Not a formal motion.
Not a formal motion, yeah.
Alright, if you would permit me. I, I, uh, was excited about the opportunity to have staff and, uh, our board chairpersons involved in this process. I had hoped for community, I mean in general and the council and my fellow counselors. We came to this, this consensus with regard to this particular process. Um, I don't want us to think that we are somewhat, somehow born with this great, um, intellect and, and, you know, uh, wisdom. On how do we go about selecting, uh, important staff for, for the city? I think everybody is important staff for the city. I, I said it to my fellow counselors and I say it publicly again. The input that, that, uh, was provided by the board, uh, members and then from the department staff. Is very important for me and my, and my decision. And, uh, because I believe that this is community coming together. I also believe that all four, and this is feedback from all of you guys, were, were met the standards that we are looking for. I firmly believe any of these individuals could step forth and begin that process of, of uniting and, and actively healing. Uh, I share, and once again, I will say this, I'm gonna disclose. Uh, I shared the, have you met everybody? The, uh, expertise, the excitement, the comprehensiveness that was presented by Mr. Garcia. And I share the evaluation of the board, um, of, of the, our chairpersons. And, um, that's who I see as our candidate, as our future city manager here for the city. A veteran and more importantly, he is already a community member here in Lamarck. He has his heart and soul of Lamarck and has invested. And that's very rare, by the way, folks, I have to say that, that's very rare. And, uh, so that for me is also very, very important. That's all I have right here.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm about to, Casey, I'll go last.
OG, thanks. Um, you know, I think I. You know, I don't wanna be a broken record, so I will just, you know, try to keep it to two sentences of. Uh, I think this is one of the hardest and most important things we do as a council. Is, is pick a city manager. And because a city manager is the exec, is the, is the person who executes. And, and you know, that meaning has, um, an unfortunate double entendre that I didn't intend. But they are the person who makes things happen, they execute the vision. And, um. For me, because of the immense amount of transition that we've had in this city. And the, just. Very significant levels of healing that need to happen in this city paired with. Deep, deep wells of knowledge that have to be tapped into in order to take us. Out of some sticky situations and to capitalize on lots of opportunity that we have. I mean, that's, you know, it's a lot that we're asking and I, and I agree with, um, Councilwoman Koffian that. We had some really good candidates and I think all of them had incredible assets and. I am, it's a very weighty decision. And, um, you know, for me, my, my top choices, um, were among Mr. Lyons, Ms. Northrup and Mr. Garcia. For me personally, because of where we are, I. Like I said, because of where we are and because I am seeking. My experience on council. What I'm looking for in this election is, is, is a leader that has significant managerial experience as a city manager. Um, and for me, uh, I agree with again, what Councilwoman Koffian said. The input from the staff and from the boards and commissions is really important to me. For that reason, uh, Mr. Lyons is my top choice currently. Um, I don't think he's the only great choice that we have. And I know that we'll discuss more, but.
There we are.
There it is.
Well, let me just say, my background is staffing. And let's just be frank, the average time for a city manager in the state of Texas, their tenure, the average tenure is two and a half years. But we need a manager that's gonna hopefully stay with us a while, so while we can, so we can accomplish some of the things that we need to. Um, we, I love that the staff is involved and that the, um. Community is involved. I'm not sure which one at this moment, so I'm looking forward to talking with my council in executive session. Um, about what would be the best fit for this city. I'm kinda stuck on the top three. My top three were the same as the council. Uh, I'm not, as, um, I'm sorry, not the council, the staff. So it's important to me that we find someone that is the best fit that can stay awhile hopefully. And if. You know, being a pastor's wife, being a pastor's wife is very political too. And I've been a pastor's wife for twenty five years. And I don't ever wanna see this ever come up in a council meeting again. About what our last city manager, uh, did to change the culture. And to bring citizens who have been friends and neighbors for over twenty years to divide us like that. So we, we really need someone that's competent, someone that's intelligent, but also we need a healing personality. That will bring us together. And I agree with Joe, that is rare to have someone that lives here, um, with that type of background and, and Mr. Garcia. But I do wanna deliberate a little bit more, uh, on that if we can. Uh, I just think some things with personnel needs to be done, uh, amongst us, so we can kinda hash it out. Uh, to make sure that we have the best fit because we don't want to do a repeat. Of what just happened. And it's important that the person can have the respect of our community, of our staff, especially because they will have to work for this person. But also for our community. I'm look, if, if you believe in the power of deduction, I think we kinda know what, where people have kinda settled on. But we just need to discuss a little bit more. But thank y'all so much. I value everything that you guys have done. Sorry if I kinda like on a seesaw. But I just wanna make sure that we make the right choice.
Well, I thank you for that councilwoman. I, I need to share with you though, we don't have an executive session.
I thought we did.
That, that's for the bond. So you in the hot seat.
I'm in the hot seat.
You wanna think about it and let me go?
Go ahead.
Okay, we're gonna give councilwoman Yancy a, a chance to regroup. This is not a vote, we're just telling you what we think. That's what councils should do, right? Should tell you what they think. So what I think is this, I think obviously, I wanna thank. Mr. Pennington, Mr. Jefferson, Ms. Brown, uh, and, and Mr. Bach for participating from and representing our community. The some nineteen thousand, uh, folks that live in this great town. And I wanna thank our staff members for doing their due diligence, uh, interviewing earnestly. I know it was weird there for a minute. You know, what are we doing? We've never done this before. But you, you all, you know, you all jumped into it and you, uh, you, you did your best. Uh, and I'm proud of you for that. You looked beyond perhaps maybe what your first inclinations would be and your personal preferences. And you thought about which one of these persons would be the best fit for our city. So I take very seriously your recommendations. For me. I think that there are obviously top three. The three folks that are, that are obviously circulating throughout both, all three entities, council, citizens and staff. Uh, but I wanna appreciate, uh, Ms. Tedford for applying and for, uh, responding. Uh, but what do I think about these, these last three candidates? And I'll tell you just very quickly. I, I thought that Lionel Lyons was, uh, very caring and compassionate. And I thought that he was very thoughtful. Uh, my concern with Lionel Lyons is that he is not from here. Uh, and when I say here, I mean Texas. Uh, he was a city manager, a, a deputy city manager in Phoenix, Arizona, which I believe they have like one point six million people. Uh, and so that was a plus. Um, he has a master's in public administration, that's a plus. Uh, but, but, but Texas is unique all to itself. Uh, and Lamarck is, is even more unique. Uh, uh, place. And so I don't know that I, I would feel comfortable at this point with Mr. Lyons. Uh, I think that Cesar Garcia is a very talented young man. Uh, I believe that he would, uh, bring a lot of innovation to our city. I think that it is a plus that he, uh, has invested in our city by living here. I think that is, it's a plus that he's bilingual. Uh, I think that it, it's a plus, uh, that, uh, he appears to me to be a very, uh, prepared and organized person. My challenge with Mr. Garcia is that he has no city manager's experience. Uh, and I don't know that, uh, that, that, uh, is, I don't know if that's a plus or a minus right now, uh, today, as, as we sit. Uh, my first choice and my first inclination. Is Ms. Northrup. And that's because, in, in my opinion, and again, this is a discussion and this thing can go, we don't even know where it's gonna end. Let me just say that. All of us can change our mind right, right now. But, but we wanna let you know, we wanna be honest with you. Ms. Northrup, for me, um, checked all of the boxes. She had worked in every city capacity in city government outside of being a police chief, a fire chief or a public works director. She had been in every other capacity. She was a former county commissioner, uh, which is an elected official. She was a former city council member, which is an elected official. She has her own communications firm and the big thing around here is lack of communication. Uh, and for me, my first impression is she has city manager's experience. And it seems to me, uh, that what we have, uh, in this city, uh, is an opportunity that can be best utilized. Uh, or, 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 uh, or, um. uh or, or, or uh, or um that can be best, how do I want to put this? We can be better served. That's a better way of putting it. Um, with someone that has city manager's experience. And so I was just impressed by her ability to grasp the issues and to articulate her vision uh and, and her, her practices uh as she goes about her business as city manager. Uh, and that stuck with me. So that would be my first choice. But this is a discussion between council and our, our first choices can change. Uh, we don't want to be here all night, but we do want to be honest with you. Uh, and so that was my first choice. I am open, council. I'm open to any of these choices. Uh, I think that we just need to, to, to begin trying to convince each other who would be the best choice. We don't have all night. But, but definitely we can try to help one another arrive at a decision. And so that's my thoughts. Joe, do you want to kind of go again and, and maybe help convince, uh, Michael, did you want to?
Mayor, as um someone who is looking from the outside in, only thing I would like to suggest to my fellow council members and the mayor that we do a great job vetting their previous histories. Because like you said, Mayor, on Monday, we need to get this right. Um, so I hope my fellow council members, I will stand by your decisions. Um, but I hope that we also look into their past and see if there's any red flags from the past. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor Proten?
Did you want to go? Oh, oh, I'll take another round here. The um, at, Michael, to your point, that's been done. That's, that is part of the professionalism of the company that we've dealt with. So all those issues were there on that side. Um, once again, I, I, I share the mayor's observations on uh, on Ms. Northrop, by the way. Uh, I a, a bit different for me. I like her experience as an elected official. But for me also, the same side, I, I'm concerned that there may be that inclination to try to play the, you know, let's, let's consider this and consider that. I, I'm the elected official here. You're the elected official here, right? And so the, the direction comes from this side. That's, that's, but in terms of, once again, these were all, I think, exceptional candidates. Uh, once again, and as with regard to Mr. Garcia, you said in there, I want the innovation. I don't know if David, you saw and the other council persons, and I think the department heads saw this. The man came prepared of all the individuals he presented. And so that you know, history wise, he was the last person to receive notice that he was going to be interviewed. So from a Friday, I believe, to being prepared on Monday and then to be come before us on the was it on Monday or I, I'm forgetting my date, right, on the Monday. So he had an interview on Thursday, right? And then on Monday, to be told he was part of the finalists. And he came in with a book that was impressive. No one else, no, no one else did that. And I know that was something that the chairpersons were really, really impressed with. But I think, uh, Mr. Garcia, that's the sort of work that I'm looking for. I think of a young man, by the way, a young man, and we speak to experience, uh, who is now the city manager of Kansas City, Missouri, of Kansas City, Missouri, I think that's right, the larger side. And Brian, I first met as the director of innovation for a town across from New York City called Jersey City. And Brian is a brilliant young man with a lots of ideas, energy, and always pushing himself. And he ultimately was then, they don't have city managers positions in Jersey City. But at the term of the city administrator quit and he was fill the, filling in that slot. Uh, Caesar has that, that experience as well as filling in for a, a city manager as well too. When in the community that he comes from out of Florida. But um, Brian, once again, innovative, exciting, then took the next step, which I think Mr. Garcia is doing here. He's ready. Brian then with of the same search company, what, by the way, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams was the one that interviewed him. And he ultimately secured the job as out of nowhere, out of nowhere, without, you know, the role specifically. And he is now that city manager of Kansas City and doing exceptional work in terms of the innovation with the police departments, with the fire departments. And uh, so that's the opportunity and, and I, there's another thing that I have with Mr. Garcia, he's a veteran. And we have a policy here in the city of Lamarck to, to, to contract like we have that with our police department there. I mean, uh, Mr. Chief, Aragon, you know this. And it says there's a mayor, Caesar's a mayor, I mean, a uh, a former veteran. And so those are the factors that uh, that I, that uh come in and, and once again, I take the input from, from our community uh on that side.
So I, I have to say, you know, I, I don't mean to throw a giant wrench in this, but I'm a, I am a big supporter of transparency and I like a lot of how this process has gone differently. But I'm feeling uncomfortable. I have to be honest that I'm feeling uncomfortable with the idea that we are going to discuss every element of, of this decision-making process in front of an audience, in front of the people who we're making the decisions about. Um, there's something about that that doesn't feel quite right to me um that uh, that I'm just trying to be honest about. You know, this was not how I understood tonight was going to go. I thought that we would talk about the process and thank everyone and we would talk about some of our general feelings and then we would adjourn so that we could have the more nitty gritty, trying to convince one another, making sure we get to consensus, weighing all the pros and cons. I thought we'd do that in private. And it's not because I think we have anything to hide. It's just that, that's because that's how most job selections are made and I'm a little concerned about the, the, the privacy and the feelings of the people who, who, who submitted for this application, you know, um. You know, luckily, I don't think any of us have anything bad to say about anybody because we all genuinely enjoy their company and they were all ex- exceptional candidates. But um I'm just, I'm just telling the truth here.
That's what we're here for, Casey.
Yeah, you know, I mean, here I am, public enemy number one in the city of Lamarck, right? Might as well just tell everyone that I'm not so sure about this part. And I, I also want to, along with that, say, you know, I'm very eager for us to make a decision, you know, um, so I, I'm really not trying to delay things, but uh, there you go. I'm done with that.
You're fine, Casey.
There, if I just say, there's one thing, and I, I, by the way, I like this. This is how I like us because so often we go into that back room and everybody's saying there's a deal being cut back there. But, and you, you said a word, Casey, that is not supposed to happen in executive session, is consensus. No one knows my vote until I'm out here before our residents and our people. Okay, so I, I want everyone to understand that there's no consensus in executive session. It's actually us against the law.
That's true. You're right. Thank you for correcting me. It certainly didn't mean that we bring ourselves to a common agreement before we come out here. But that we agreed, we all felt heard and that we felt heard in a, in a safe space where we didn't feel like we were holding anything back because you might be afraid of what someone in the audience might think or how it might be construed by the public. So I appreciate you catching that. I will once again say that executive session is not meant for us to go back, cut deals, make sure we're all on the same page and agree on something before we come out. But it is designed for us to have the privilege as elected officials to talk things out in detail in a safe space because we might discuss things that we do not that it's not appropriate to disclose about people in front of the public.
I got you. I just caught what you, I, I caught what you're saying. I got you. I, I, I totally get that, uh, Casey. I, I really do. And I know exactly what you're talking about. And I know exactly where you're going with this. I do.
And by the way, just one last comment, the disaster on city council here, I'm prepared to move forward.
No, we're gonna work this out. This is, this is your government uh at work i- in real time. Casey, I want to thank you for that. I, I, I know what you're talking about. I do. I think we all know what you're talking about and it's important. Um, and, and I take that under advisement. I think that that for so long, governments, not, not necessarily our government, but, but governments um, uh, work because of, of their nature. They work and, and they have things done, you know, before they get to a place of public debate. And a lot of that's by design. Uh, and I think people in general are frustrated by that. Uh, and so uh, I think that it's refreshing for us as a, as a community to be as transparent as we have been. Right, wrong, good, bad or indifferent, at least people know what we're thinking. And it is hard to say in this place uh and, and on YouTube. You know, I, I think that candidate A has these issues uh and, and that, that's tough. But I think that those of us that are in this process, we know those issues. Uh, and so uh, we have to, to as best we possibly can uh let the, the, the community know, you know, what our thoughts are, what our feelings are uh without disparaging uh anybody. And that's hard to do, but it's what the, at this point in our, our juncture in the city of Lamarck, it's what's necessary because we need to show them at every turn, we have nothing to hide. It's difficult though, and I do appreciate what your comments are. Do you have any, any other, you want to, you want to, you want to lobby for one or the other? You got? You got some reasons why you like who you like or?
I mean, uh, you know, as I said, I very much liked um all three of our top, of our shared top candidates. I think they all had lots going for them and I could see them all in the position. For me, it just comes down to I want somebody who's been in these shoes before, who has dealt with municipal, big municipal problems before. And, and come through them and brought people together and has that experience. And for me, that was, that was Mr. Lionel Lyons. And yeah, I'll leave it there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Yancy. This is why we get paid those fifty dollars, y'all. Come on, let's go. I know I've been doing this a long time, but, but y'all in here with me.
No, seriously though, I'm gonna ditto what Casey said because I did not know we were gonna do it in this format. And I think if we need to know uh as elected official, who, first of all, who, who determined this format? I mean, I'm just want to know, who, Ms. Mayor? Who, whose decision was to determine this format? I just, I just want to know what, who made the decision of this format?
I think we all did.
No, I, I wasn't involved in that.
I think, I think we called a meeting to name a city manager.
Yeah, but I thought we were gonna do the executive.
Do you want to do executive session? Because if you want to do executive session, I have the power and authority to put us in executive session.
I think we need to go to executive session.
Casey, do you want to go into executive session?
Yeah, I support that.
Okay. Joe, would you like to go in the executive session?
And I won't participate in it. I, I've, I've expressed my opinions outward in the public. That's it.
Look, guys, this is, a- at the end of the day, I will do whatever the council asks me to do. And if that, if, if this is making you uncomfortable, then, then I would be willing to retreat into an executive session. Uh, and, and I'll say that, you know, with, with love and care for my colleagues. I don't want you to be under any strain or any difficulty. But here's the deal. We adjourn into executive session when we're out of executive session. Those same things that are said in the executive session without uh what Casey mentioned, maybe there's some things that we should mention. Because, you know, they may be problematic for these folks if they don't get this job. Uh, we need to say exactly to the folks out here what we're saying back there. Does that make sense? Is that fair, Casey?
Uh, yeah. I, I understand you're saying that when we have discussion behind closed door, you would like it that we basically re- reiterate whatever we said back there out here.
That's all I'm asking. I wanted to be totally transparent now uh without, you know, some of the things that would hurt people.
Why?
Because I think that we're trying to get to, Casey, I think you're trying to raise a, a question about some things that might be sensitive.
That she can be sued.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I get, I get you. I get you. And we'll leave that out. But any of the other comments, I think that we need to bring them to the people. Is that fair, Casey?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Fair, yeah.
I do want to, I do want to let the public know, like, no one's a murderer, okay? Like, we should, like, let's, let's bring a little bit of levity here. It's just like questions of people's privacy and doing something that we haven't done in a way before. And I just want to make sure we're treading lightly.
Yes, that's, that's very good. I, I don't have a problem with that. And we're gonna tell, tell y'all everything that was said. Uh, Mr. Mr. Austin, you have something you want to? Okay, let me visit with you. Let me, let me move us into executive session and then I'll visit with you very shortly. Uh, let's, let's uh uh move past this, this open discussion of our city manager's position and move to item eight, executive session. The council of the city of Lamarck, Texas reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any matters listed above as authorized by the Texas Local Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five five one dot zero seven two, deliberations about real property, five five one dot zero seven three, deliberations about gifts and donations, five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters, five five one dot zero seven six, deliberations about security devices, and five five one dot zero eight six, economic development. We are retreating into executive session to deliberate five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters, and I promise you, it will not be long. Uh, after that, we will also uh have a consultation with the attorney, uh, section five five one dot zero seven one, discussion relating to the barn election. Again, I can promise you, this, this won't be long. So we adjourn into executive session at what time?
Seven forty-nine.
Seven forty-nine.
We are back from executive session. This is a moving train that we're trying to get a hold of. Very big decision for our community. We went into executive session and I was eavesdropping. So I'm gonna tell you exactly what was said. There was a concern about us speaking about these candidates in public and what that would do to their future. The issue here for us is that this is a transparent government. Under my watch, it will always be a transparent government. We will let you know we're gonna do this in public. Let's reopen the meeting at what time? Eight fourteen. Y'all can, you can tell I'm on fire right now. I am burning. We will be a transparent government. I do respect the gentle lady from District D. And the gentle lady from District A. In their concerns. And because of that, I wanted to make sure that they were heard. And I did hear them. And we've resolved that issue. We will not say anything negative about these candidates. We will simply stick to how we feel they fit in this city. And we can respect that because they have lives. We won't deliberate much longer. I know that Ms. Yancey had not had a chance to speak again. I want to give her that right. To speak again. Maybe she does, maybe she doesn't.
So it's very important to me that we make sure that we not hurt people because this is on public record. And being a bit of background in staffing as well, I wanted to make sure that that did not occur because we can be held liable for that. And but I knew who I wanted based on what our staff said and based on our our community said, my number one is Cesar, my number two is Lionel. I like Cesar because there's a dynamic charismatic feel about him. I always like to see Lamarck win. I think a lot of people overlook the people that live here. And I think we need to change that. He does have experience in management as far as when it comes to parks and wrecks. He's already here. He can hit the ground running. And I think it would, it will show that we believe in our own. He is bilingual, which the Hispanic population is our fastest growing population in Galveston County, particularly in our schools. Is, I like what he talked about when he said his coach and team approach, but more importantly, he was very professional. His packet was professional. He came with solutions. He was able to win our community chairs because the important thing of this is that we all have to have buy-in to whoever we bring. And I, and that's why he's my number one. Lionel, I agree with Casey. Lionel has a lot of management experience as well. And he would be good. I know some of the staff liked him as well. But Caesar, Cesar is my number one and Lionel is my number two.
Very good.
I'd like to, and I don't know if it's appropriate this time, but I know that we hope to reach some consensus of not, but this is part of the process. I'd like to make a motion that we extend an offer to Mr. Cesar Garcia as our next city manager.
Are there any other, any other nominations? Is there a second?
I second.
Well, let's discuss. Does anybody want to go first? Well, let me go first. This is not an easy job. These seats here on council. You don't get compensated or even appreciated. And so I, I feel the pain of my colleagues. Truth is, I think that Cesar has a lot of potential. But at this point, I'm vacillating between Cesar and Cynthia. And it is because Ms. Northrup has so much experience. But I would not not work with Cesar. I would work with him. I just don't know that I'm settled right now. And I don't want to take a long, I don't want to keep discussing this. We've been doing this for eight months. And we have to vote, but Casey, I'd like to know what you, what your thoughts are. And I know that you want to be very, very cautious and I think the people know that by now. So you don't have to say anything that you feel would make you uncomfortable.
Thank you, Mayor. Honestly, I can say ditto to what you said. I feel like you know, I I also think that Cesar is has got tons of remarkable potential and I really liked a lot of what we heard and we interviewed him. I think he was incredibly professional and I think he's got a lot of very act experience. I agree with you about Ms. Northrup. And I feel the same way about her as I do about Mr. Lyons, honestly. I mean, I think I'm very drawn to their experience and I'm also feeling unsettled. It's not that I am against moving forward with Cesar Garcia, but I also feel, I just feel unsettled. I don't feel completely resolved in that decision.
Yes.
Sorry, yes, ma'am.
There is, there is a, so that we can, we can be clear. And I promise you all, the decision will happen faster than what you think. It seems like it's going slow, but before you know it, we'll decide. But I wanted to just get some things clear in my, in my mind. In the charter, there is a section that speaks to the city manager's position.
That is correct.
And former council member James Osteen asked for an interpretation of that section.
So, well, I'll begin, I'll read it. It says, "The city manager shall be chosen solely," or "The city manager shall be chosen by the city councils solely on his training in municipal management and his executive and administrative qualifications. At the time of his appointment, he need not be a resident of the city of Lamarck, but must become a resident in a, in a time period established by the council."
Could you help us? Could you clarify what it means when it speaks to the experience in municipal government? What does that mean? Does that mean they have to be a city manager previously? Or does that mean they just have to have experience in municipal government?
It, the charter just says municipal management and executive and administrative qualifications.
So that could be somebody who, who has not ever been a city manager?
I would say that is a question that is likely in the purview of the council. If the council is comfortable with that person's training in municipal management and his executive and administrative qualifications.
Ask again, are there any other nominations?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just the comment to follow up on the qualification part. You're the old guy when it comes to council service. I'm just plain old. And apparently for some of disaster. So that's, I'll accept that. I'm not worried about it. And but I just want to comment that what's interesting about Lamarck is that we've given people that, in my opinion, in my opinion, that have not been city manager before, the role of city manager. So I just, I just want to clarify that. And so that, that is, that's happened far too often. And so that's, I just bring that up.
That's a good point, very good point.
And by the way, in terms of the educational background of all the candidates, I want to be clear in this. They are both at their undergraduate and their master's levels, all of them. And so their, their, their background is, is interesting. I will say this about Mr. Garcia, his is in math. And I love that, someone that can understand numbers. And his presentation, once again, his book is important for me. That's all.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor for Cesar Garcia. Any further discussion?
I have a question. You said, so you also asked, are there any other motions? Would this also, like, so you're saying like, if I wanted to, you know, move, we, you know, extend an offer to someone else, this would be the time, even though there's already another motion on the table for somebody else? This is just sort of like a law of order question.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I was asking Casey was, are there any other choices that we, we would need to consider? Just, just in discussion, being curious.
Yeah, okay. Well, then I then I move, then I move that we extend an offer to Mr. Lionel.
Don't say it like that. Don't say it like that.
Oh, but I move, we, however Joe said it is how I say it.
No, I'm saying we have a motion on the floor. I was just wanting to know, maybe I, maybe I said it in a way that confused everybody. I just wanted to know, are there any other persons that we are willing to consider at this time? That's what I was trying to ask, ask of the council.
Well, then I would, I would like us to consider Mr. Lionel Lyon.
How do we feel about Lionel? I know Kim already said that it would be acceptable to her. Miss Compion, are you still firm on Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Garcia, the input
Tell me, help, help me. Because I'm the one that's, and maybe Casey as well. I need, I need, I would like you to convince me and Kim, if she wants to share as well. What, what makes Cesar the right fit for our city?
I think there's a dynamism that, well, actually I shouldn't say, all of them in their own ways had a dynamism. I'll have to say that. It was just, I think all of them presented well. But the difference, right? When we look at differences, when I stopped and evaluated because, you know, I ran a big company. We had a lot of people over 2,000. And I heard, there was no, it was a feeling, a lot of it's feeling. And but then the preparation, when the gentleman walked in with the binder and the background in the math and the accounting aspect of sports management and his masters. The, those, the binder and presenting a simple to understand budget book as well. Those are the tools I think that we need now. And, and more importantly, we need someone that is used to doing the work themselves. Not someone who, and, and once again, I'm just, that criticism, that's what impressed me. He did that work himself. Right? And, and that's what I feel that Mr. Garcia will continue to do. If he'll be here, if he has to be stapling those books and, and doing them, just like he did with his presentation. He's gonna do that and do that with all of us as well, too. So for me, this is a with, of, an all of us decision based upon the advice that came back from both groups on this side. And so that's my basis.
I appreciate that. Kim, did you want to add something?
Yeah, based on his answers that he gave as well in his packet, that were, they were, they were very thorough. He talked about a team approach. He, he is a former teacher. Teachers are trying to bring people together. Teachers are trying to make sure that there's boundaries. And apparently due to our previous experience, there were no boundaries, seemed to be. There were, there was just a lot of, I'm gonna do whatever I want to do regardless of the charter. So teachers are trained to understand boundaries. We're trained to do it accordingly because we're dealing with other people's children. So that's a, and he, he brings that type of compassion to the job. He talked about, you know, I, I still think it's amazing for Lamarck to have so many championship teams, but not have a Parks and Recs. Not have their own department for sports and things of that nature. He brings that, he can do that type of planning in his sleep. Because that's something that but, but, but more importantly, I think he's someone that that will want to do excellent because we gave him an opportunity. We gave him an opportunity because he, like Joe said, he has the education. He lives here. He knows our community. He doesn't have to wait a year and observe as someone else would have to, as Mr. Lyons would have to because he's not from here. He can hit the ground running. And we have already lost time in the last eight months. And we need someone that could take it and run with it so that we can do what we need to do. But I think he has what we need. That's why he was my number one. Because, because of that, sometimes, because this area is a little different. I grew up down the road. When you, when you come back, it's a little different. And so you have to kind of learn the people. Cesar has been in Galveston County. And he hasn't been here so long where he's chosen sides, so to speak. You know what I mean? He still has an objectivity that we need in order to be, to be fair. And again, I, I think, you know, they're neck and neck now, not, so I believe that he's a better fit because he's, he's here, he has that teacher, that team. And the Cougars are all about teamwork. There's one thing I know about Lamar Gallow, all of, we are, now we are all about coming together as a community to, to be great. And I just, and let me be frank, Mayor, I think he'll be the one to take the safe city initiative and run with it. I think he'll be the one to take what we want to do and to be able to connect with the kids because he's not so old. You know, or so, or so young, but he's that, he's right in the middle where he can connect with, with all age groups. In order to, and we just need someone that's going to be a brand ambassador. That's going to know how to go to HGAC and communicate with one thing, let me say this, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is one of the, of Houston, is one of the strongest chambers in the nation. And we're not even touching that. And if you have someone that can speak that language and understands that culture, that will help us to, to bring us up to say, because we've always been diverse. But we've never really played up on that. But we've never really played up on that strength. And I think he'll bring that as well. Uh because we haven't, we haven't been using H GAC like we should. We haven't been using the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce like we should to help bring people to move here because at the schools, we need bilingual teachers. We can't find them. So he brings so much, that teacher, that management style, and he wants to be here. Now, how many people you know they actually live in Lamar that want to be here? I mean, I'm just saying, there's a lot that that treat Lamarck like, you know, these people that always show up, we know y'all love Lamarck. But there are some people that every day they get on Facebook and trash you.
Yeah.
But this is someone who has lived here for a short period of time, but he's here and he wants to be involved in that. And I think that should come for something.
That's a very good argument, Yancy. That's very good. It was a very good argument. It's an excellent argument. Why not Lamarck? How how are we going out outside of our city boundaries? When there's somebody who moved to Lamarck on purpose without ever thinking they would ever ever be in a position to serve. That's a powerful argument. Casey, what you think?
I agree. That is powerful argument. And I'll take that as an opportunity to say again that like I I would be very happy with I any of the three of our top candidates. And because they each they shone in different ways. Um but Kim, Kim and Joe made some really good points. And well, I'll just say that they make some good points.
Let me let me ask David, was was your your you your groups one and two was Northrop and Cesar?
No, the other way.
I mean, but they were they were the two, the top two, right? And and Ms. Patty, will y'all spread evenly across the board between the three? Let me let me ask it this way. All of you all that work for our city, look at me. Can you see me? How are we feeling about Mr. Garcia? Can we work with him and for him? Gando, I don't know why you looking at. I'm teasing, man. I'm so teasing. I I'm so teasing you right now. I'm teasing you.
I could tell you, I've been here for so many years and been through so many city managers. And we will work with whoever the council chooses. To ask us to tell you who we personally like is, I don't think is fair. Because we support you and we support your decisions.
Nobody's, nobody, you know what? Let let me say this to you and then we'll vote uh one way or the other. We get so accustomed to doing things a certain way. And that's what this whole discussion was about council in the back. It was it was about us doing things differently than we've done them before. And it does, as long as I'm the mayor, what you all say matters to me. I'm not asking you to choose a city manager for us. I'm having enough compassion for our staff to ask if you all would be okay.
You gave us the honor of being able to interview them. No one else has ever done that my whole time up in the city. This council allowed us to interview candidates and I really appreciate that. And I'm not speaking for my but I truly appreciate that and I took it very seriously. And I've been through a lot of city managers. We need an experienced city manager. We need one that will communicate and will bring us and keep us going forward like I think council's trying to do. We've gone through a hard, hard, hurtful time. And we hung in there with this city that we love. That matters to live here and I manage how much you love it and how much you care about these people that live in the hounds out. We need a strong city manager. Because we have a strong council. And you have a strong city employees. You have strong directors. So your choice, we're gonna work with you no matter what. We're gonna work with them no matter what.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, I'm not gonna stand here and tell you who I'll choose.
You don't have to. I just, I just, I just, I just, I just wanted to understand and know. I I I think differently than every than than I think differently than a whole lot of people.
That's why, that's why we're following. That's why we're going. That's why we're staying together.
Ms. Jennifer?
I will speak. Yes, I am a city employee, but I am also a resident. I grew up in the area. I raised my own family here. And I have been on the side that a lot of citizens are. I was the angry citizen over a year ago, all over Facebook. I was angry, but I will tell you the one thing our city needs to move us forward is someone with experience and someone with stability. We need someone that's gonna be here for the long haul. We can't have someone and come in and train someone and they turn and burn and go somewhere else. They need someone here for the long haul. We need someone with experience.
Yeah.
And I feel work with anybody. I like all three of them.
Yeah. Come on, Mr. Loftus.
Good evening. I'm gonna, I guess, piggyback off of what Jennifer Jennifer said as far as being a citizen. We do need somebody that's uh strong, strong will, with experience. And I don't know these people's qualifications. You all do. And I really hope y'all make the right decision. Because if you don't, that uh forward together is gonna be backwards together. And if this person Caesar, if he lives here, great. If if he's gonna be the best candidate, great. If if it's somebody from the outside that's probably got more experience, maybe y'all might want to look at that. Maybe we want to hire somebody that actually lives here. Just because you live here don't mean you care about Lamar. As Ms. Yancy said, there's a lot of people that live here that don't give a rat's tail about this city. So let's make sure that Mr. Caesar lives here and actually cares about Lamar. We won't know that until we hire. You know, people, they they say they want the job and then they get it and it's a whole different story. Once you then hired him, now you gotta try and get him out of here. So this community is asking that y'all make the right choice. Not on the buddy system, if you know this guy personally, or, you know, you're friends with him, you go to church with him, you drink a beer with him. That ain't the reason you hire somebody. You hire them because of the qualifications that they have. You know, for for far too long, there's been times where people get jobs just because they know somebody. And I don't think that that's the reason we hire somebody, just because I know him from school, church, in the community. It may be that the people from the outside, in some cases, are the best candidates. I've sat back and and watched this community hire as um in the school district, people from the outside for far too long. And those people from the outside came in here and wrecked it.
Yeah.
Got their money and left.
Yeah.
So it it is a checks and balances that you guys have to to make sure that you get it right. Because if you don't get it right, you're gonna hear from the public.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor. I I I want to take an opportunity. You know what's different here? It's not the council making it. We we use one of the highest rated search groups in the country with regard to the qualificat- all of them are qualified. Let's get that off the table. All of them are qualified, period. And I also want to say this, based upon the history of this particular city, they are ultra qualified with the city managers that we've had in this in this city. And so I I I want people to understand that. And um and they've been that it is Michael said. And um as I said, I urge the council to to uh extend an offer to Mr. Garcia. Thank you. That's all I have to say now. So I'm ready for a vote.
Ready for a vote?
I think that, you know, you you prompted something in my mind, Joe, by saying that. And you're right. I mean, I think we can all take some assurance in the fact that and some rest easy in the fact that Baker Tilly is a very elite organization and they do a great job. They come with all the accolades and our experience with them was great. And something that our consultant, Mr. Williams, said to us last time we saw him was, I urge you to go back and I urge you to reflect on what were the qualifications that you gave me. That you your expectations for that next city manager. And one of the things that we all said, you know, that he told us we all said, and that was part of the parameters of his search was previous city manager experience. And like, I mean, that that is it for me. Like, that is the reason that that I that if that's that, you know, Ms. North and Mr. Lyons are just edging out Mr. Garcia for me. Is that we all said that. And it it I mean, when it's this close, I think we've all said it, when it's this close, we're picking out those little nitpicky things. And hearing our staff all say that they they're craving experience too. It's not to to knock the experience that Mr. Garcia has, which is extensive and great and very dynamic. But it is not city managerial experience. And I'll leave it at that.
Well, this is a hard one, y'all. This is a hard one, guys.
Well, he had city management experience. I look what he did. I'm just saying.
I'm not going down that road.
I mean, I'm just saying, um based on his uh management experience that he's had so far, I believe he can handle a city of our size. And again, and I've already I've already said what I thought as far as uh we deduce what whatever what everyone has said. It's it looks like it's Caesar one, Lionel two. Based on, we look at everybody. Am I right, Mr. Turney? You look at, you you
Talking to me?
Yes. You know how they teach you about the law deduction and commonalities and
Well, I mean, what Patty told us was that Mr. Lyons was number one, followed by Mr. Garcia or followed by Ms. Northrop and then Mr. Garcia.
Oh, I thought she said they were even, that they're not.
When she, unless I misheard, what she, when she came up to us at the front at the beginning.
Was number one? Okay. Okay. No, that's that's what we're, that's that's what.
No, it's it's just it what it is is it's a tough decision because in my mind, we have somebody that has a wealth of experience. Uh but we have somebody that was that that's that's a hometown person who knows Lamarck already for me. And for me, my one and two is is Northrop and uh and Cesar. Uh so I'm struggling with um do do I vote to give a young person a chance that could hit a grand slam? He has the potential to knock it out the park. Or do I vote for a person who I believe can give us steady singles? We know, well, maybe we don't know. In my mind, I know, I know that Northrop will will be able to hit a single every time she gets up to bat. Uh but but also perhaps Cesar can hit a grand slam. And it might be the best thing that we've ever done. So the risk is greater with Cesar, but the reward is greater with Cesar. So I'm really, I'm really torn. And at that, at this point, then I have to start thinking about what 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 David and his group said. Um and and start thinking about perhaps what what Mayor Protem and Ms. Yancy said. Um and I'm willing to try. But guys, I've been down this road before. And this is a, this is a very uncomfortable position to be in. But we can't stay here all night. We gotta move. We gotta vote. We gotta do something. There's a motion on the floor. You're right. Yeah, you trying to call for the question?
I'm asking, call the question.
You calling for the question?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're ending discussion. Hold on. All in favor of Cesar Garcia being offered the city manager's position. Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Casey, we need your vote.
Understand. I say aye. I'll I will trust, I will trust. I'll trust.
You're not the only one. I think I think all of us have to trust in this. This is something that I we all have to trust that this is the right decision. It is a very uncomfortable posi- position to be in. It is an extremely uncomfortable position to be in. But we have to trust.
And Mr. Mayor, along those lines, I trust the input that has been received. And I also trust that I'd like to know, let the residents of Lamarck know that I trust the healthy discussion that has occurred, not in that back room. Because I've never been an advocate of back room in any in any of my activities. So uh but everybody whoever the the decision is, is let's get excited. And uh and I think everybody will be impressed by Mr. Garcia in terms of what he offers our city and our community. Thank you.
So this is not worth the fifty dollars that they give us. This is turning my stomach. Did you want to say something, Michael? Please take some space and some airtime.
I just asked if we're offering Mr. Garcia the position that we in this contract that we have some sort of I don't want to say an out, but some sort of recourse so we're not paying a large lump sum in the event that we have to replace him.
We will not, in my opinion, and this is a fa- uh four member vote. Uh we will not extend and it the eleven months of of salary as has been our tradition per contract with uh the previous two city managers. Uh until we go through some sort of a probationary period, simply because has nothing to do with Cesar. We shouldn't have never offered that to Mr. Jackson or even Ms. Butler. And I'm just being real. Because when they leave, they leave with a year's salary regardless of the circumstances in which they left. And that has that has caused a tremendous burden on our reserve fund. And we all know that. When those folks left, they uh Mr. Jackson left with a large sum of money. And it was, he was entitled to that. I'm not, we're not arguing that. But the point is, we want to try to guard against that in the future. a large sum of money. And it was, he was entitled to that. I'm not, we're not arguing that. But the point is, we want to try to guard against that in the future. And we want to try to make sure that we are coming up with a contract that will be more beneficial to us than the previous contracts. And so after a probationary period, we can be open. We, we may, we may offer, uh, this person uh, three months severance or six months severance or something, something like that, and let them grow into. Once you've been here three years, five years, and you've put your time in, then we might renegotiate that contract. And I would suggest that we negotiate a contract on a yearly basis. It's not a rollover contract. Every year, we are going to have an evaluation with you, and we're going to either offer you a new, uh, a new, new contract, or we are not going to offer you a contract, and we'll just let that contract expire. So that we don't have to pay in the six figures, uh, of monies ever, ever again. Does that sound agreeable to you, Casey?
Um, I mean, yes, I just, you know, I, I think I want us to just follow what's common practice for city managers. And also, and with that said, though, it's a good reminder that, of what, what you just said about the immense resort, like unclaimed balance that's out there, um, that our finance director has warned us about, and that we got a very dangerous peak of this last fiscal year. We, we have some even harder decisions to make going forward about how we're going to handle that with savvy and with compassion and strategy going forward. But, um, yeah.
Anybody else have any hot burn with that?
Well, the reason why I brought it up is not just because of what happened to us. There's cities throughout Texas that have fallen into the same problem.
Yeah.
They, and I've had other council people, people from other states or other cities tell me it's like a little TML traveling circus. They got city managers going from city to city. And they'll spend two, three years, then move on to another city, get a good, get a large paycheck. So I'm just one to guard our citizens' money, our taxpayers' money.
We're gonna have to bring a, bring a contract back next meeting. Uh, Karen, Gus.
Yeah. I will work with Mr. Williams and we will extend a proposed contract to Mr. Garcia. Or I can bring it to council first, whichever council prefers.
I, I, I would say bring it to us first.
Well, I will do that.
Yeah, thank you, Gus.
Guys, before we move to this next section, we are a friendly council and we get along ninety-nine percent of the time. But what you've been seeing up here tonight is some feistiness from us. This is a hard decision. But we do love each other and, but like a family, sometimes we just, we have to let it out. And this is a, this was a tough decision on all of us, and it made all of us feel uncomfortable. And when that happens, you get what you get. But, but I'm sure you all can understand that. So, uh, let's move on to item, let's move back and pick up item. Eight A. We will now retreat to executive session again to discuss our police building bond. I don't anticipate that would be as agonizing of a decision, nor do I anticipate that taking as long as this one did. And so we will retreat at
Eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-five into executive session.
Ready? We are back in regular session at?
Ten forty-six.
My god, it's ten o'clock? It's ten forty-six. We're back at ten forty-six. We had a healthy discussion tonight as it relates to our police station. And I think that you need to hear what we have to say. Who wants to go first? You want to go, Joe?
I'll go.
Okay.
When I first received this proposed ordinance about calling a bond, I was very, you know, I speak cautiously, very uncomfortable. I was uncomfortable with the amount, number one, because I want to see it pass. I'm committed to a new police station. I am. The courts, different things, right? But as far as the police station, I'm committed to that. And what I was also concerned about timelines. The reality is if we were to pass this today, it's basically six weeks of trying to get things done before early voting starts in April for this May election. And I don't think we do things that well in that period of time. And understanding that if it fails, if it fails, we learned this, by the way, we learned this from our competent bond council as well, that we can bring it back again in November, two times a year, May and November. But if it fails, there are other options that are taken off the table for a three-year period. And those other options are very, very important. And they still permit us to accomplish the objective of what? A new police station. So many of us learned about those options this evening. And so, Mr. Mayor, I want to repeat, number one, I'm committed to supporting and making sure that we have a police station, new police station for La Marca. And if some consider that a Taj Mahal proposal, well, so be it. I'll accept it. Some consider me a disaster anyway, so that's a, well, I'll accept it on that side. But so, having said that, I'm deferring personally, Mr. Mayor, on any action on my part with regard to this as a bond, as just calling a bond election. To give us, and we had a very interesting conversation and presentation by Mr. Wong as well, too, very competent, who also indicated it would be ideal to have more time to develop the proposal, right? And get really, really specific information, and more importantly, to get our citizens involved in this process. And that, for me, is ideal on this side. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I somewhat echo the sentiments of my colleague. However, I do support the municipal courts, too. That is a promise that we made them during the budget year, that we need to take care of them also. And I think that, like my compadre said, mazed way too early. We need to do this right. We need to give them what they want, what they need, and they deserve, not what they want, what they need and deserve. And I learned some things tonight myself that in order, some of the numbers I didn't like, however, in order to do it right, I learned different ways we can make it happen. And I do want the citizens to get involved, too. I don't want it just to be for the officers, I want it to be for the whole community. And we've always said, we're here to represent the citizens, and they should be involved. They've been involved in a lot of processes already, so I want to keep that up. So, I would like to not put this on the ballot this March or this May.
I just wanted to echo that, some of the questions that, one reason why I love this council is that we ask questions, and we listen to our constituency. And we want to do this right. There's a saying that my brother, you saw, says, he's a basketball coach, he says, "If we strive for perfection, we will catch excellence." And I think that's what we're trying to do, is to make sure that we have a better plan in front of us, and that it does not overburden our taxpayers. And so, that has caused us to kind of, you know, let's look at this. November comes around fast, if we have to do it that route, but we want to look at all of our options. So, in that vein of, if we strive for perfection, we will catch excellence. And I do want our first responders, our courts, to know that this is something we're very committed to, to making sure that you're in a proper building, and we want to make sure that you have the best and not... We don't want... And we want to make sure that you have the best and not, we don't want to build something rinky-dink, right? We want to make sure that we look at all our options and that we do it in a very cautious manner. So. That's all right.
Casey, did you have anything?
Ditto to the fullest. And, you know, I wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly continue to support and will advocate and will fight along with everybody for this new public safety building, a new home that fits the needs of our growing city and of our very hardworking first responders, police department, and our municipal court. Like, like Councilman Carlson said, they deserve it, they need it. It's been a long, around a long time. But that means we, they deserve for us to try and set it up for success. So we just need a little longer.
Thank you. Thank you, Casey. I was visiting with, a couple of months ago, Mayor, former Mayor Ron Crowder. And he educated me to the fact that, I believe he said, in this city, there has never been a bond passed for this city. And that struck me. And and that's been with me the entire time that we've been through this process. The other thing that struck me was the reaction of some of our citizens who actually really, really want a police station. This price tag of $14.7 million, even though citizens were saying we would love it, but we don't know if we can get it passed. So that's causing some problems. But the good news is, and it is true, May is May is early. May is really early. It's early for us to get things together. We were looking at with Alec. I think there were like six options. We were back in the back looking at five options. Five very different options. So here's what I want to say to you, because it's really late tonight. What I want to say to you is this. I pledge, and perhaps they've all said this to you in their own way. We will get a new police station. We're going to go a different route. And the route that we're going to go is the route of certificates of obligation. The difference between a general bond and a certificate of obligation is the general bond is very restrictive, and the general bond goes out to the voters. A certificate of obligation is flexible, and that certificate of obligation can be issued by this council. Y'all see the difference? And so if the council was telling you that we're going to get you a new police station, then we're telling you we're going to get you a new police station. It's a done deal. What would the timeline look like? This is going to happen this year. I, as the mayor, I'm going to make sure that these issues are on our agenda so that we can go through this process this year. We may not be able to start the process of breaking ground until 2023 and all sorts of things like that. But this year, this council will address. This year, this council will 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 address the issue of certificates of obligations. Now, what are we doing in the interim? Here's what we will be doing in the interim. This council will immediately start studying the options that Alec has given. This council will immediately begin the process of working with our finance department to make sure that we're understanding the numbers correctly, to make sure that we are not getting into catastrophic debt, unreasonable debt. This year, this council will name a police station committee. I think that's what we called it. Right, Alec? Public safety building committee of citizens who will work through this process, not only with council and not only with the architect, but with all parties involved. This is going to happen this year. These things, I can promise you, will happen before the May election. And so we will know today, this is February, what, 17? So we will know by the time this, the election was supposed to happen in May, we will know exactly where we're going, exactly how we are going to pay for it, and and exactly what the sentiments of our community members are in relation to this new police station. I believe the vast majority of our community members realize that we need a new police station. I believe that with all my heart. We have to give them an opportunity to be a part of it, give you an opportunity to be a part of it. But we have to do the right thing for our community. And the right thing for our community is to have a building that is not a Taj Mahal. It's not a mansion. It's not Trump Towers. But a but a building that is functional. Can we at least have lockers? Can the dispatchers have bathrooms, right? Can we at least have training rooms? Can we at least have a real evidence room and not a vault or whatever it is? Right? So that's our commitment. You've heard every council member commit this to you. And I expect that you'll hold us accountable. And I expect that in March, our meeting in March, we will have one of these items on the agenda. I don't know if it will be the public safety committee naming. I don't know what that next step is, Alec and and Gus and and yes, they will help us with what those processes are. But you will see every meeting, you will see us address in one way or the other, this new police station. And as I promised you when I got elected, I'm promising you now, it will happen. It will happen. And the truth of the matter is, and I tell it to you like 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 it's, I'll tell it to you straight. The truth of the matter is, I don't know that it would have happened with 14.7 million dollar price tag. I'm just being honest with you. So we got to pare that down. We got to get that down as low as we could possibly get it and still get it done. And that will happen. I promise you that. Very good. Anything else, council? It's late in the day. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry, Kim.
We have stopped the violence starting Saturday and all next week. Please come out and participate. That starts, it's a Zoom on Saturday, a comm on Monday, musical on Wednesday, Friday, a chat for men only, and Saturday, the basketball tournament as well. But we have flyers out, please say a prayer for us as we really teach our community how to stop the violence. Okay, that's it.
I was reminded, I'm sorry, now you're wrong. Also, in conjunction with the activities there on Saturday, please be reminded that the garden club is doing a cleanup at 9:30 a.m. You gather at the fire, the West Side Fire Department. And those of you that have the time to join out there, just bring your own gloves and and vest. And but that they will be gathering out there at 9:30 a.m. on Saturday.
Well, now, what are they cleaning, Joe?
The garden club adopted a portion of the road, adopt the road.
Very good.
But through, keep Texas beautiful. And and so I want to say 64.
They're going from there to the long 7065.
Oh, 65, okay. So they'll they'll be there.
9:30.
9:30. What is that?
Yeah.
And they're staying at where? Ohioland Bayou Park, and that's exciting, all we can see as well. Oh, all right.
Texas Independent Trail Ride, did you say, JB? Saturday morning at what time?
A horse. Get him a cowboy hat.
Mary, Jen and I, Jen's trying to get you and I to go out and meet them tomorrow.
Who?
We're going to shake their hands.
Oh, okay, okay.
As long as it's not snakes, right?
You were working on that, Jen, right? Okay.
There's one other item of business. Kier, would you place this with the police station on the next regular scheduled agenda? And also place, we may or may not need it, but place an item for us to name a public safety committee? Let's get this done ASAP.
Mr. Mayor, you're asking for items, and I'll be distributing. But I'll be asking for us to have a good spirited discussion about our water bills in the city of Lamarck. It's just something that keeps festering. No one understands them. And, you know, this this month exists. I think that's a situation that occurs in every community. And so I want to get the persons that are involved in that process. I think, Kim, you and I met with that, that outside company as well, and and have a discussion about that.
Also, on February the 24th, which is next Thursday, is that right? Next Thursday? We will have our first annual over at Lamarck High School in the Commons area. And I believe the majority of council, all of us, we got to check with Casey to make sure she's she's healthy enough to to attend. But we will be February 24th at 6:00 p.m. at the Lamarck High School Commons will be our first annual state of the city address and town hall meeting. We do a state of the city address every year at the Chamber of Commerce. We did it this Wednesday. The problem with that is you have to pay for the lunch to get in, to be a part. And so we don't want our residents to have to pay to hear the state of their city. So we're going to do this every year. And we're going to couple it with a town hall so that we can present to you as as mayor and council, and you can ask questions of us. And this year, I believe we would be able to have the new city manager present so that that our community can come out and meet CSAR. So again, next Thursday, a week from today, 6:00 p.m. at at the Lamarck High School, we'll have our first annual state of the city slash town hall meeting. This was the normal day of our tax form. But because those folks that question our tax rate, because they have not made their way to our council chambers with their new plan to compare to our plan, will go out into the community, and perhaps they may show up there. We don't know, but we'll be ready to have some pleasant discussions about where we go from here. Mark your calendar. Now, can we go home?
No.
Go ahead, Michael.
I got one thing. Somebody would bludgeon me if I didn't mention this. There's a new new restaurant, new business in town called Sweet Treats. So if you got a sweet tooth like me, which is great for me because it's right next to Benito's, or I'm sorry, Barcina's. It's right next to Barcina's, so it's on the west side of town. That's why it's great for me because I can hop over a fence and I'm there. But it's called Sweet Treats, so it's a new business that just opened on Monday. So.
Yeah. What's that, Kim?
No, she's a problem, Lamarck High School graduate.
The owner? The owner's a Lamarck alumni, Lamarck High School alumni. Very good.
And if I didn't make it clear, yes, I want a new police station, and you will get a new police station.
It's happening, folks.
That's all I have, Mayor.
It's happening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, man.
To my council members, I apologize for stepping out of the hard decision y'all had to make today. It was not an easy decision. And I'm sorry, I feel like I left you guys down. But just know, I, like I said, I support you all in your decision. So.
Thank you for that, Michael. I think it's time to go home, guys. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.